Welcome, everybody, to the Holyoke School Committee. August 25th, 2025, calling this meeting toward 6:13. Roll call, please. Ms. Feliciano?
Mayor Garcia. Dr. Rivera Colon.
Here.
Mr. Sheehan.
Present.
Ms. LaFave.
Present.
Ms. LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Ms. Stansley Williams.
Aqui.
Mr. Izzaza.
Here.
Mr. Wellahan.
Here.
Mr. Colomar.
Here.
And Ms. Wilson.
Present.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in visible liberty and justice for all.
On March 29, 2025, Governor Moore O'Healy signed into law bodies to age 62 as amended by Section 2506, which contains the final form of the bill entitled "An active relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency (ACT). Of interest to all governmental public bodies in Massachusetts, the Act extends until June 2027, the authority for meetings of multiple member bodies to be held in an entirely remote or hybrid format. All public bodies may hold fully remote or hybrid meetings without the physical presence of a quorum of the public body as long as adequate alternative means of public access is also provided." Pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the Cities Community TV channel. Welcome, everybody. Is there any... It looks like we don't have any student showcase yet, but happy first day of school for everybody attending.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
I would just like to make a point that I'm hoping that our schools have a plan for getting our student reps this year, so I would assume that they wouldn't be here since it was the first day. But going forward, so, thank.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Feliciano, public comment?
No.
Thank you. Communications and reports? Yes, seeing that we don't have the student reps yet. Moving on to Superintendent's report. Mr. Soto.
Yeah, I have three items on the agenda. First, you know, the first day of school went amazing. Thank you to all of you that showed up to welcome and greet our students. I've gotten a ton of positive debriefs from our principals. I just text each one of them individually on my way here, and everybody reported a strong day one, so shout out to everybody for all the planning that went into it, and we were so happy to see our kids. And I was at Peck this morning, and it was just amazing to see the kids smile and light up with, you know, seeing the building for the first time. I have three items in my report that I'm hoping will get referred to the Finance and Operations Subcommittee. The first one being Student Activities Memo. You can see in your packet there. Normally, I have approved all the student activities to date, but the school committee hasn't really seen much of this over the last nine years, so we wanted to get a fresh start and make sure that we get everything up to date and that all of you know what student activities are out there and the Mass. General Law around the student activity and the procedures that we have in place to make sure that student activities are managed in a way that minimizes risk. In 2017, one of the things that I changed drastically with student activities was each school had their own accounts. They were handling cash. They were handling, you know, dispersments, and we changed that procedure so that now everything goes into Munis, and if you're gonna be making purchases, you do it through the requisition process, which was just tightened up a lot of the controls that we have in place. We do plan on coming back to the committee for, you know, to close out inactive accounts, and we look forward to any discussion that we have at the Subcommittee.
Mr. Sheehan.
Make a motion to receive and refer the Student Activity Accounts Memo to the Finance and Operations Committee.
Motion by Mr. Sheehan, seconded by Ms. Stansley Williams. Discussion. Mr. Wellahan.
Thank you. So what's your expectations for the memo, for the... to land the finance? Just want us to review the process or review the individual accounts? I had questions just on the inactive accounts myself. Some of them looked really old and dated. Some of them had nominal values, and so I don't know what your expectations are.
Yeah, so the first thing would be to accept, you know, or to vote to accept Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 47. The second would be to review the procedures that we've established to help us manage the student activity accounts themselves. And in that procedure, it talks about, you know, what we do with inactive accounts over time and what we do, you know, for example, with the graduating class, once they graduate, how much time they have to collect the monies, and then if they don't, like what we do with those funds. So we've worked on these procedures, so one of the things that we wanted to do was make sure that you guys had an opportunity to look at them and authorize them. And then part of the... Part of the MGL is that any new student activity accounts get approved by the school committee first before they're opened. So we want to get off on the right foot and say, like, this is a list of all the accounts that we have right now, so we want to, you know, we want to approve those, and then any new ones that come up in the future will come back to the committee prior to creating the student activity, and any that we inactivate or that don't have activity, we would also be coming back to the committee. So that would be the goal of the discussion that we have.
Okay. It seemed like a long list. I hope maybe we can condense some of them. You know, the Latin club, the German club, the French club. Maybe make that into just like a language club. That's just my initial reaction to it. Thank you.
Mr. Sheehan.
So just when these come back, I'm wondering if, in that chart, extra columns can be provided that explain what building they're for, and the ones that aren't, like, I know what wrestling's for, but the ones that aren't self-explanatory, just like what that may be. Also, is... The motion is to refer it, but you mentioned having to adopt Chapter 71, Section 47. So if we don't... If we pause on adopting that, does that mean that schools can't access or utilize fundraising and abilities to use the accounts until we do that?
That is not how I'm, you know, unless you guys say that that's the expectation, but...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we don't have to take other action. Okay.
Mr. Colomar.
Altogether bonded?
So because the dispersments are essentially done by the treasurer, we don't have, like, not each, you know, advisor of the account is bonded. The treasurer of the city is bonded. If we had a situation like when, like when I got here in Holyoke where the person receiving the funds is also the person responsible for dispersing the funds, and they just had access to do that, and that would be, you know, enough for us to, you know, get these individuals bonded. But right now, not, you know, the dispersments are handled in our accounting system. It's like a person makes a request, and then it goes through a workflow, and ultimately, the treasurer of the city cuts the checks.
Ms. Wilson.
I'm just wondering how an account was allowed to go into the negative?
Yeah.
If we're doing the checks and balances.
Yeah, so that, the way that I think an account can go into the negative, because if you're just entering a requisition to purchase items and your account is in the negative, Munis will stop you from doing that. But if you submit a reimbursement for expenses already paid, and it goes through our payroll system, then that will, you know, Munis doesn't block payroll because we don't want people not to get paid. So we have to go through a process where we clean that up. So like, that's, you know, I recognize that that's a negative account, and then I need to work with Sean to figure out, like, how are we gonna cover that negative expense? It all goes into the same checking account, so if you look at the checking account, it's in total. It's the total that you see there. But we, you know, we definitely discourage employee reimbursements. We want people to go through the process of entering a requisition. The only time that comes up is like on an emergency basis. Like, we had, you know, we have a dance tonight, and like, the PO didn't go through, and we have to pay the DJ, you know, something like that happens where an employee pays the DJ and then gets reimbursement from the... Through the payroll process.
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. I'm just, you know, I work in a school district, and, you know, getting to a negative value would just not be possible. And while the total is fine, I don't think any of these clubs would appreciate having some of their monies that they've fundraised to cover that cost. Is, you know, I can say, if I was the Holyoke High School football that had $125, and you took that from me, I wouldn't be too happy. So I'm glad that you're looking into that to set something up, and I can tell you, at least from the school I work at, reimbursements are not permitted unless you have the principal's authorization before you do that. So if that gives any ideas for you, just so you know, thank you.
Thank you. And we wouldn't pull from another student activity. So I think one of the things, and Sean's on, I don't know if Sean wants to add to this, but one of the things that we have to come back to the committee on is if we have, some of these accounts may not have had activity over the past three years, and we're gonna be looking to close some of those. You know, that could be a place where, you know, that we transfer some of that to cover this negative balance, or we can, you know, we could be looking to transfer some of the expenses that happen onto another funding source so that it brings that back into balance. But, you know, Sean and I will work together and make sure we get, we bring that back.
Thank you.
Mr. Mangano, did you want to add something?
No, Anthony's right. And then there's also, there's just been some movement with the schools and the configuration, so, you know, we're gonna be, like the MetCaf one, for example, that would have been closed out, where we'd have proposed the shift to that, coming up shortly anyway. So we'll put together a plan, and we'll bring that to the school committee.
Thank you. See no further discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
The next item, which I also hope would get sent to Finance and Operations Subcommittee, is a budget transfer. One of the items on there that we're looking to transfer funds for is software that we came across. I met with the police chief of the Holyoke Police Department and came across a product that he thought would increase the safety of our... Enhance our safety protocols. So the product essentially is a really good blueprint of each school where they come and they walk in, and they create this blueprint of a school so that emergency responders, in the event of a real-life threat or issue, they're trained on how to read these blueprints, and they can easily navigate. Once they get to a school and you say, hey, you know, there's a situation going on in Quadrant A11, they know exactly where that is. They understand what A11 means. It's not something that we actually, you know, have to do, but I do think it's a good idea to enhance some of our safety protocols that we have in place. So we're looking to fund that right now out of contingency. The initial lift would be to get this in every single one of our schools, and then there would be a much smaller recurring fee, I think, like $6,000 or $7,000 a year to keep that update, keep that on their platform and updated. But we essentially own the blueprints. It's not like other products that I've seen out there where you have to pay them, and then when the partnership dissolves, like, they own exclusive rights to anything on there. Like, we would actually own the blueprints moving forward. Then the second item on there is, and this came up at our last school committee meeting about, you know, being a little more proactive around when we have vacancies for related services, to not wait to the middle of the year to get these contracted services in place. So we are being proactive and looking to transfer funds from vacant positions to contracted services so that we can bring in vendors to help support some of our students.
Ms. Wilson.
So when you were saying these blueprints, so who brought this information to you? I missed that.
It was brought to my attention from the Holyoke Police Chief.
And have we...
Who was probably at a conference and saw this and said, you know what, this would be really great in Holyoke.
Have we put a bid out to see if there's any other organizations who might do this? So we're not just going with this one because it was recommended because they were at that event?
Yeah, I think once we get... We didn't put a bid out because that would, you know, we would have to get three quotes from, you know, from three different vendors, but
Right.
we were looking to get initial approval first and then obviously follow the procurement process. But I think that this product is really a... It's unique. It's sole proprietor, I would consider it. But, you know, Sean wouldn't allow us to not make sure we're following the procurement law when it comes to that stuff. So if this is something that the committee does want to move forward with, we would follow the proper procurement channels. And Sean has his hand up.
Go ahead, Mr. Mangano.
Yeah, and they're on a group purchasing contract as it is, which satisfies the procurement rule. So they've already gone through a process to get onto a group contract.
Ms. Wilson.
So if I understood that correctly, you're saying that we don't need to follow the process and go out to bid?
We wouldn't need to for them, and to the point the superintendent made. So this is a proprietary software, like many of the programs we use. So the likelihood that there's three programs that are just like this is unlikely. There could be other programs.
And they could be better.
The committee. Yeah, no, to your point, that the will of the committee is for us to see what else is out there. We could do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sheehan.
I'll make a motion to refer the transfer request to the Finance and Operations Committee, and they can...
Second.
Discussion. Ms. LaFave.
So being that that's what the intent was and the request for Mr. Soto, then my question would be, under new business, we have that same request with the recommendation for us to approve the budget transfer for the same thing. So that... Would not be happening.
Yeah, we would skip that because we're hoping that the motion is...
Okay.
To go to the Subcommittee.
Mr. Sheehan.
So I guess the only thing, I mean, reading over the two pages that we got about this, what I don't understand about this software is I get the mapping and having that information of the blueprints. I don't understand, one, why it's only internal and not external as well, facilities related when it comes to this. But what I don't understand is the ongoing cost and what would change. Like, I guess I just need to understand the... What is the... Why are we paying a yearly fee if we're getting... If you're saying we're getting something that we get to have, why do we need to pay every year? That's my only, and hopefully the Subcommittee figures that out.
Mr. Wellahan.
Yeah, I mean, this kind of seems like it's technical information in terms of safety issues. I don't know whether, you know, the Police Department wants to do a presentation to the full committee. You know, I mean, we're talking about, you know, it's more technology-driven decision than finance.
Ms. Wilson.
So my computer died in the middle of this. So let me just understand. So we're looking to send the blueprinting, whatever, to finance in order to get the funding for it?
Yeah, we would need to do a budget transfer in order to fund it. So in order to approve the budget transfer, I think that, you know, we're first saying what the budget transfer is for and hoping to answer any questions.
So if I were to say no?
Then we wouldn't do it. If, not you, but if the committee said no.
It's not that I don't support the idea of, you know, higher safety in our schools. I'm absolutely for it, and if there's an event that our first responders need to respond to, and if this aids them getting there quicker, absolutely, for our families, our students, our, you know, our teachers, our staff, everyone. But I just want to clarify that I want to see this go out to bid. So would I be voting no? Then if we're just doing a transfer of funds, is that gonna supersede then the process?
And no vote says that this doesn't go to the Finance and Operations Subcommittee at this point. Ms. LaFave.
Right. So my understanding is this is gonna go to the Finance and Operations, then they will dig in deeper into what the cost of this program, what is this program going to offer? And obviously, more than likely, the question that Mr. Sheehan asked in regards to the ongoing annual fee, and then make their recommendation back to the committee as to what then, how we should proceed. Should we instead seek out three bids? Or whatever. But right now, by what I'm understanding, it's just to refer it to Finance and Operations.
Mr. Wellahan.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just looking at this, this topic, and I'm just looking at what the City Council did a couple years ago with the Spot, the Spot Shotter, or... What's the proper name for it, I think, right?
ShotSpotter.
ShotSpotter, okay. You know, they went back and forth with that for months, you know? They had the vendor come in, you know, they did a presentation, you know, these are statistics, you know, the program was in Chicago, it was in Las Vegas, you know, they did the stats. They brought those stats back to the City Council. They got vetted, you know, back and forth for months on that, you know? So again, there was a vendor in charge that was providing the data. You know, who's gonna provide the data to the Finance Committee? A memo from Sean? You know, is that gonna suffice? You know, that's my open-ended question.
Mr. Sheehan.
So I'm just gonna say that we get very narrow scope on this. We can take this as a budgetary matter, but as a school committee, we get to say, yes, the transfer can happen, and the superintendent has the authority to make the decisions of purchasing. We don't get to say that, yes, this can happen, but you can't buy this software. So we can say, no, you cannot, we are not making this transfer, which would in turn mean you are not buying that software, but we don't get to put the strings on what is purchased. So just, I mean, the transfer is there, the request is for the transfer. The administration is... Superintendent said this is the best possible option, which would, it's a proprietary sole-source item, that they can say that we've sought out advice on this, and this is what we want to purchase. We get to make a decision when the transfer happens. We don't want the transfer to happen, the purchase doesn't happen. That's our authority here. I was asking about the ongoing costs, because there would be ongoing costs, and the why, because that's something that would need to be budgeted going forward. But we don't get to make the decisions. We have very narrow scope on what items we get to make decisions for, and this is, so we can say yes or no on the money, and that's what the Subcommittee can figure out. But the superintendent has said this is the best possible option out there, so we get to use our authority in budgeting on that.
Thank you, Ms. Stansley Williams.
My question to Mr. Soto is, after you spoke with the police chief, do you think we need this? Is it something extra, or would it benefit us?
I mean, I think it enhances our safety protocols and allows us, in the worst possible-case scenario, where there is an incident where first responders have to go, it better equips them to handle those situations. If we're, if we never have an incident and we never need to use this, then that's awesome. And then like, then it would be, in some ways, you know, a waste, but like, in the event that we actually need it, I think that it gives first responders more tools to act more quickly and address an issue and be better equipped to address an issue. So if the transfer doesn't go through, the only, the reason I'm bringing it is because we didn't budget for this, and if we want to buy it, we need the school committee to approve transferring money for it. If the transfer doesn't go through, and, you know, the mayor and the police chief think that this is something that they want to do, even if the school department isn't paying for it, then, then like, that is something that may end up happening.
So it's better to have it and not need it than to need it and then we're sorry?
I think so. And the police chief thinks so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mangano, is that a new hand or an old hand?
It's a new hand. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So just the question on the annual cost. So there could be zero annual cost. There's no requirement for an annual cost. If we wanted to, they make updates to the platform. There's different types of maintenance they do to the platform. So if we wanted to keep the latest version of everything, it's 560 or 580 bucks a school, which is how we get to the 6,000 or 7,000 per year. So it's an option. We don't have to do that. We could just get the maps, have them. We would have them available, and then we could have no recurring costs in the future. So it's sort of an option for the district, and we would dig in with the company to find out, like, what types of enhancements and maintenance are being done to determine if it's worth the annual cost. But we would be able to budget that in the future if need be. And then to Mr. Wellahan's point about information, CRG, you know, if the school committee wants to get more direct information from the company, we could, you know, arrange for them to either present at the Finance and Ops Subcommittee or bring them to a full committee, if the committee feels like it needs that information directly. They would be the experts to talk about their product and how well it works.
Thank you. Ms. Stansley Williams.
Sean, is this a one-time fee or monthly or yearly?
The budget transfer request is a one-time fee to get these maps created and the, basically, the layouts established. And then, as I said a minute ago, we could have no recurring fee. We would have those, and we would own them, or we could opt to pay an annual fee to get maintenance and updates to the program.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
And the last item in your packet is just us truing up to the final budget. So as you all know, we developed our budget based on the Senate Ways and Means numbers, and then, once it goes through the final budget process, we often see changes in the charter assessments and/or school choice. And I've outlined in the memo the changes that were made to the final budget, and eventually, we have to true that up to stay in line with the net school spending requirement.
Mr. Sheehan.
Are we looking for action on this, or is this an FYI? What's the...
Eventually, it would be... So we're looking to move it to the Finance and Operations Subcommittee.
Receive and refer to Finance and Operations.
Second. Second by Ms. Wilson. This question. Mr. Sheehan. Seconded by Ms. Wilson, discussion. Mr. Sheen?
So I understand the charter school stuff and why those numbers decreased so much, but school choice tuition, did we? I mean, did we get a huge influx of new enrollment or what? I mean, for, to be four hundred thousand off on school choice?
Yeah, I, I haven't seen the numbers behind how many seats the, the state is counting in their, in their assessment, but I can tell you that it, it gets updated regularly. I want to say it gets updated three times a year, if not quarterly. Um, so these numbers will fluctuate again. So the charter assessment number and the school, school choice number, they, the, throughout the budget process, they do, they give their best efforts to provide us with what we need to budget for, but, um, then throughout the year, they actually go and count the number of students that you have in charter seats and the number of students you have that are choicing out of the district. And then they, you know, they basically update their, uh, the numbers accordingly. And you know, if, if it's, if it's, um, a material amount, we usually come back to the, you know, we would come back and, and make the adjustment. Um, sometimes it's this, in this case, it's, it's material and in some cases it's, it's not. And we work with the uh, city treasurer's office to make sure that our numbers are up to date. Or the, sorry, the city auditor.
All right. So no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Next up, new business.
Uh,
Engagement letter.
Yeah, we have. So, um, as many of you are aware, we went through an RFP process to select the general counsel for the school committee and the counsel that's going to represent us for collective bargaining and employee related matters. Um, the, the other attorney that, that we use for special education and for student, uh, student related matters, uh, is the, the engagement letter is attached and uh, Mr. Matthew McAvoy is here. Um, you, you, uh, if, if you've read the attachment, you see that his bio is in there and the other two partners bio is in there. Um, I can tell you from my experience, they've been a great partner. Um, Mr. McAvoy is always, always, always available. If we're in a pinch and we need some legal advice on how to, how to handle a specific matter regarding a student or uh, special education, he, um, you know, he's always available and, and has supported us and, and continues to support us. So, um, wanted to create an opportunity for you all to meet Matthew, and I'm not sure if there's any action that the school committee would take. Um, but that's, that's what we were hoping to do today.
And then one other thing that I want to give as a background is, um, when we're seeking for advice, our, our we hired our main counsel. Mr. McAvoy has been from the district side. So when we started working with, um, the student handbook and we had, um, issues that we wanted legal review on. Some of the issues would be referred to Mr. McAvoy and that's part of the reason why we are talking about this now because we want to make sure that everybody understands who we get advice from, who's representing us and so on and so forth. So this was part of the process to make sure that everybody is informed as we move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Sheen?
So do we need any type of a motion for the committee to engage on this agreement?
Is Ms. Wilson? Was this just a notice of information because we've already entered into a contract? Was this just more of an informational as to who we're going to be working with so that we're familiar with those individuals and their backgrounds and how relevant they are to our work?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, yes. So we had already, he, he's, he's been working with the district. Um, and continues to work with us on issues. Uh, the reason I got the engagement letter was because it goes through the procurement process and, and as part of the process, the city needs to see the engagement letter. And, um, one of the things we recognize is you, uh, this, the committee hasn't had the opportunity to meet uh, Matt McAvoy like they did Mark Terry. Um, so I also wanted to create kind of space for Matt to introduce himself and to talk a little bit about you know, uh, how he has supported the district and, you know, um, and hopefully, you know, just, just give, create that opportunity.
Ms. LaFave.
Right. When we, um, voted to elect, um, Attorney Terry and that firm, we had also interviewed another firm. So now my question is going to go back to, um, how long have we been working, uh, with this firm? And when the initial contract was developed, was it developed for a certain period of time? Or was this going to be like an every year type thing?
Yeah. I mean, we've been working with Matt, um, for as long as I, you know, as long as I can remember. Matt, I don't know if you want to speak to your experience here in Holy.
Since two thousand seventeen, we first came aboard when Receiver Zright was, uh, the receiver for the district.
Okay. So it becomes a revolving, just ongoing and there was no expect, there wasn't like a term contract end date.
There, there was not. It was, we, we essentially, we represent over seventy clients, seventy districts across Massachusetts with the majority of districts, except for certain districts that have, uh, specific municipal requirements. We don't actually even require uh, contracts or retainer agreements. It's pretty much a call us as you need us, uh, arrangement.
And
and I'm, I'm happy to talk to you all about, you know, the work we've been provided that we have done with Holyoke since two thousand seventeen. Uh, I've represented Holyoke in regards to, um, Bureau of Special Education Appeals Matters, Student Discipline Matters, General Student Related Matters, and conduct quite a bit of professional development training for Holyoke staff. Uh, I have been practicing in this area for thirty-two years. Uh, I am a former parent side attorney, a former Bureau of Special Education Appeals Hearing Officer for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And for the past twenty-three years have focused my practice exclusively on representing public schools, charter schools and vocational schools, kind of all across the state. Uh, I represent several districts in central Mass as well.
Ms. LaFave.
Okay. So now here's where the questions are going to come. Now that we have local control, right? And we sat here and we interviewed the other two firms and then decided and voted on one. The question is going to go back to, this was, um, an agreement or a contract and a hiring of this firm during, um, state control. And it was through a receiver who chose, um, the firm. So here's my question. If we're doing the process correctly, then at the end of the day, wouldn't the contract now have to be developed with the school committee who now has the control of the district with, um, the firm McAvoy, Joyce and Kowalski?
Yeah, it was my understanding during that RFP process that this, this, uh, committee wanted to uh, solicit an RFP for a specific purpose, which was, you know, general counsel and labor relations. And, uh, you know, throughout conversations, we're aware that we, we do use a, a different attorney for, uh, special education and student matters. So it was my understanding that, that we weren't going to be going out to RFP for those services because we were, um, you know, we, we already had somebody, um, that was working on that. So that, that's kind of what I'm hoping to get out of this. Like if there is any action that the school committee would like to take around this, then you know, uh, to let me know so that we can work through a formal process, but, um, more so to, you know, I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity because I had mentioned throughout that process that we do use a different attorney for student related matters and special education. Um, and I recognize that this, the committee had not had the opportunity to meet this person.
Mr. Sheen?
I'd like to make a motion that the, uh, school committee engage with McAvoy, Joyce and Kowalski for special education and general education uh, matters as outlined in the August nineteenth. What is the engagement letter?
Seconded by Mr. Isasa. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Ms. LaFave?
So I just want to go on record, just saying that I want to make sure that we're doing the process correctly. Right? It's not that I'm saying that that's not the firm, that I don't agree with it, whatever. I just want to make sure that we uh, all our i's dotted, t's crossed and making sure that now being that we're back in local control, that if the decisions are for us to hire, then it's for us to approve it. So thank you for the motion.
Ms. Wilson? Yeah, I, I agree, um, that, uh, we're in, we're in a new world for us. Um, and I, I appreciate um, everyone's educating us more and more as we move through our local control. So I just want to thank everyone for that. Thank you so much. Mr. Sheen?
I'd like to make a motion to go out of order to take up the family handbook next.
Seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams. Discussion?
Thank you, uh. Oh, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you for the motion. Um, so this item is on the agenda because there was some outstanding questions related to the student handbook. And I just want to say that, um, you know, as, as, uh, Dr. Rivera Cologne mentioned, the employee handbook went to Mark Terry and then the student handbook went to Matt McAvoy. Um, and this happened right before I went on vacation. So I wanted to make sure that, uh, as part of the process, we got legal to review the whole handbook. And, uh, Mr. Mogell was, uh, in, uh, connecting with Matt McAvoy, sent him the, um, the student handbook and he was able to go through and review the entire handbook and delete anything that he thought, um, shouldn't be in the handbook. Um, and there was a miscommunication, uh, at the last meeting where, uh, uh, Mr. Mogell mentioned that, um, it was the legal advice that we have to keep the HIV AIDS section in the, in the handbook. And as I was preparing for this meeting, one of the, one of my action steps was uh, to reach out to the attorney to see if he was available to talk about why. And in talking to him, he, uh, you know, he mentioned to me that, you know, it, 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 we could actually delete that section. So I was hoping, um, A, for you guys to meet him, which you already did, and then B, for him to uh, briefly talk about, uh, his process in terms of when we sent the handbook, how, um, you know, what was, what was he looking for? What was his review process like? And if he wants to touch on the, uh, HIV language section that in question, um, to create that opportunity for him. So, um, Mr. McAvoy, do you want to talk about, you know, what was your review like of the student handbook and?
Absol- absolutely. You know, when, when we, we do nu- I do multiple student handbook reviews every year. Um, the last time I had reviewed, uh, Holyoke, um, community handbook was in two thousand eighteen. That, that contained the same language regarding HIV status. Uh, generally when I'm reviewing a handbook, what I'm looking for is information that is misleading, legally incorrect. Um, or information that's, you know, really out of date or has been superseded by some change in the law. Uh, with regard to the HIV information in question. Uh, there's really nothing inaccurate about that state, the statement in the handbook. Uh, it simply provides kind of, it reiterates the additional protections provided under Massachusetts law. Uh, as far as the confidentiality of student information, uh, relative to HIV status. Uh, but it also provides some procedures for parents to follow if their child is, um, HIV positive. It is, you know, not information that's required to be in a student handbook. It's also not information that's, you know, patently inappropriate for a student handbook. And when I'm reviewing student handbooks like this, and particularly when they're specific statements about uh, certain subgroups of students who may be, you know, uh, at risk or disproportionately impacted by potential actions. Uh, I generally do not, you know, recommend removal of that language as it can be alarming to members of the community when suddenly that language is gone. Um, and the language in the handbook, I did consider legally correct. It was somewhat redundant in that we already have a provision under the student health record section, uh, referencing the confidentiality of that information under chapter one eleven, section seventy F. Um, but it, it would, it would be totally fine to remove it if that committee were so inclined.
Mr. Sheen?
So just to make sure that I heard correctly, the district has not had an attorney review of the student handbook since two thousand eighteen?
I haven't reviewed the community handbook since two thousand. I, let me just check. There might've been a, a quick review by someone in the office in twenty-three, but the primary review came in two thousand eighteen.
Okay. So there's been no legal updates or changes to this handbook since two thousand eighteen by the district?
Oh, well, there are definitely legal updates. Uh, the, the, the discipline statement sections have been updated to reflect changes to, well, the, the, you know, implementation of Mass General Law, chapter seventy-one, section thirty-seven, each and three quarters, the school rules violation statute, as well as the amendments to that statute, which, uh, came into play in November twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, sorry.
Okay. So what's the difference between a review and additions? I, I mean, I guess I'm very confused that the district doesn't send.
I, I will tell you, I can give you some examples in the handbook. Like one of the, one of the examples of an addition was, uh, first of all, the, the MASC's proposed policy language regarding the recent Supreme Court decision uh, in the Mahmoud matter, uh, regarding religious opt outs. Uh, I also, we've also included additional language regarding, uh, non-discrimination in food service activities, which is now required language. Uh, and that what that language being contained in the handbooks is being kind of aggressively reviewed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for districts all across the state. Uh, I believe I added some other additional information in various places to kind of clarify what the legal requirement was, or if there was a sentence that was misstated, you know, was misrepresenting what the actual obligation of the district was or what the rights of the student are. So I essentially will go through line by line uh, and make red line changes and include, uh, related comments in the margin where the change uh, isn't, you know, kind of obvious in and of itself.
Ms. Wilson? So I don't see any red line changes. I don't see the changes that were made. I know they were made, but I would say in the future I would appreciate a clean version and aligned version. So I know what the language was that was updated. Because otherwise we, we don't, I don't know any, anything could have been updated. So I would appreciate that in the future, a clean and then the red lined.
Yep. Noted. Um, we did create a summary of like, here was the old language, here was a new language, but it's not something that's included in the packet. So I'd be happy, you know, one of the things that I'm hoping to do is bring the student handbook and the employee handbook once, because there's still some unresolved, you know, uh, comments in there that I'm working with Mr. McAvoy and, and our team to update. And so, uh, one of the biggest things that's outstanding is we got to work on getting the Spanish translated version of the handbook, but we don't want to do that until we get final approval. So I'm hoping at the next meeting, um, to have all of those comments resolved and to be able to summarize any changes. Um, that, um, the, the issue here is that I had two different people managing the process. So So Beth was managing the employee handbook and the way she was doing it, she was using track changes. Mogell was handling the student handbook and the way he did it is he created a chart of like, here's what we sent and here are the, the recommended changes that the attorney had. In the future, whenever we're soliciting input from legal, I, I have to come up with a process with Irene so that we're, we're consistent and we have like positive confirmation and review of what the legal advice is from either, either one of the attorneys. And I've already talked to Irene about, about that.
Ms. Wilson.
Since the topic is the handbook and since we did just get advice that the the HIV section is not required, is it inappropriate for me to make a motion at this time? Or would we need to wait until the next meeting? Because I would like to make a motion to remove that language from the student handbook.
Do we have a second? Mr. Isasa on the second? Discussion. Ms. Tensley Williams.
I think we need to wait until it's final. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson.
So in order to finalize the handbook, the reason, you know, Mr. Sheen had asked about, you know, this section, is it, is it necessary? You know, the, the thought process around HIV and AIDS has changed and we don't identify any other, you know, medical condition separately like that. We don't do hepatitis C, things of that sort that are transmittable. So I'm making the motion because I don't want to wait until it's finalized. We, we should change it or remove it before it's finalized. And we just heard from our legal counsel that it is not required to be in the handbook. So that's why I made the motion. And then if we, if we vote to take it out, then that would be removed as part of the final version. Because we don't want it to be final and then go back and say, now we want to change it. So that's why I'm making, I made that motion. Thank you.
Mr. Sheen.
And I'll just say, I, I support that, but if that doesn't pass, what's in here is also archaic language that I've talked about. And I've made suggestions to make it more inclusive with it that are there when we were going through this. And I just think that there's, we can do better than what's there if it doesn't pass either.
Mr. Collimer.
How many times or is it yearly that this handbook is reviewed?
Yeah, we go through a process where, you know, most of the time there's not a lot of changes. So I can think of, you know, I can think of a couple of times where we had to made, make substantive changes. So like when, when the federal government changed the Title IX procedures, we had to update our handbook to reflect that. And, you know, there, there was a time where we were talking about the retention policy and, and, and creating that, which we talked about last year. Those, those were some pretty substantive changes, but from year to year, we don't see a lot of substantive change, changes. What we do is we go through a process every year where at some point during the, you know, during the late June, early July, we go through a process of making sure that everything in there is updated. And if there were something substantive that needs to change, that we need legal advice on, we would reach out to Mr. McAvoy and say, hey, we, we just saw that, you know, that this law changed, so we want to make sure that the language is in the handbook is up to date and he would consult with us and get us the right language. But most of the changes are, you know, changing the years to reflect the updated school year. If we have some new principals or, you know, a new school or we change addresses or somebody changes, we want to make sure that those changes are in there. So we go through that process. But in my experience, it's, it's, it's not substantive unless something changed that requires us to change the language. And this year in particular, we went through, you know, we made sure we sent everything to the relevant department heads to review. We made sure that the attorney had an opportunity to go through it all. I don't anticipate that every year it has to be such a substantive review, but it's just minor changes and tweaks unless something requires us to change it.
Seeing no more discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you, Mr. McAvoy.
Thank you, Attorney McAvoy.
Thank you all. Thank you for having me tonight and have an excellent school year.
Thank you so much. Have a good one. Next up, out of state field trips.
Yeah, so you have in front of you a field trip that we're hoping to get approved for, it will be two students with two chaperones from the Holyoke High School. And it's building off of the work that we did with the Student Summit. It's going to be funded by the Barr Foundation. So it seems like a, a great opportunity for us to engage in this field trip and hopefully bring back some good stuff. Many of you remember the, the Student Summit that we had last year where we had almost eighty of our high school students, you know, talk about real school issues and, you know, how they can play an active role in, in changing it. And we, we got a lot of feedback from them on some, on some issues in the school. And it was just a, a, a great, great way to engage students. And we, we just think that this will be a great opportunity to continue that work.
Ms. LaFevre.
Motion that the school committee votes accept the out of state field trip for Holyoke High School North Campus to attend the Aurora, the Aurora Institute Symposium in New Orleans, Louisiana from October twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth.
Seconded by Ms. Leroy Martinez. Discussion. Ms. Wilson.
I think would be really wonderful if we could get the students as well as the chaperones to come and just to share as one of the, you know, upcoming, after they attend this to share with us, I think would be really, it's an exciting thing for them to attend. And I, I would love to hear what they learn, you know, I think that'd be great.
Thank you.
Not required. But a request.
Sounds like a great student showcase.
It does. It does. That's why I was saying it. It does sound like. Exactly. Right. Give them a little time. Don't do, do the end of November. Not the bright away. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sheen.
Have we received this grant money yet as a committee?
Uh, yeah, it's a, it, the, the Barr Foundation is a multi-year grant that we've had.
But it's the same disbursement that we've had or is it a new disbursement that the committee needs to receive the funding?
Same disbursement that we've had, yeah.
Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Out of state travel.
Make a motion to approve the authorized, the out of state travel for Kristi Elman, Director of Recruitment to attend the American Speech Language Association Convention, November nineteenth to the twenty-second.
Seconded by Ms. LaFevre. Discussion. Mr. Willian.
Thank you. Yeah, this is one of the ongoing challenges for our budget is funding these specialized speech pathologists and psychologists. Most of the districts out in Western Mass are having challenges funding these positions. So we have to go through, have to hire them through, through a contract basis. So hopefully this will improve that, our, our hiring process. That's what I'm hoping for. But again, if every other, I'm, I'm assuming we're not the only district that's going to be attending this. So you might have, Amherst might be there in North Hampton. So looking at the same, looking at the same employees. Thank you.
Let's see, no further discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Budget transferred and reports. And we're, we took this one already, it's referred to the Finance Subcommittee. Gifts and Grants, McKinney Vento.
Yeah, there's two grants there and a, essentially a gift that was given to us. The first one, the first grant is our Normal McKinney Vento Homeless Education Grant. And the second one is the CPPI Grant, the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative with, which helps fund, you know, about six of our pre-K full day classrooms. And the in-kind donation that we have is from, you know, health technology company that reached out to our technology director and wanted to donate some devices. So it's not any devices that we would be deploying to students or anything because it's not the same devices that are auto-imaged across the district. But if there's ever a need to, to have a device in, in central office or something like that, if there's ever a need, we would deploy. They're, they're brand new devices. So we're just hoping that the school committee accepts donations and gifts.
So do we have a motion?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee accepted gifts and grants received.
Most, maybe Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams. Discussion. Mr. Sheen.
So I just want to hear more about this donation of the three Dell Optiplex desktop PCs. And so, and the three Surface Go computers. And it says to support the schools, but it sounds like there's really no plan to, to support the schools with those. So did they just? So it was just a phone call that said, hey, we want to give you this stuff? But we're just going to have it sit for people in central office? Like, I'm?
Well, we're going to have it sit until there's a, a need for it. I, we haven't identified a need. They reached out and said, we'd like to help the school district. I know it says schools there and they're brand new devices. So, you know, if, if we didn't want to accept these, we would just tell them, sorry, we wouldn't, you know, we, we can't take these.
Well, so, I mean, I want to accept them and I will vote to accept them, but it's also like, I mean, we need to, I mean, I also don't know who Pixel Health is, but we need to have a plan with this stuff because people are going to give us things, like we should at least be getting those resources out. So, I mean, these desktops that we're getting, are they things that we can adequately use on our network? Are they, I mean, are people using desktop computers? Is there, I mean, is this going to create a strain on our technology department using a different type of software, a different type of hardware that they're not normally used to having to service? So I, I guess I just, I mean, if we're going to take stuff, I want to use it and I want a plan for using it. Yeah, I, I agree. Call come?
I agree. Sean, do, do you have any other information?
Yeah, so Jenny Malave, who is our Director of Data Services, she wants them. So that was the first step, the call. She was the one that received the call about the donation. And my first question was like, do you want them? Because they're, you know, a different model than we have across the district. So, but she does want them. It wasn't solicited, so I agree with you, Mr. Sheen, about having a plan, but it wasn't like a grant we applied for where, you know, where we, we, there was an identified need and we were trying to fill that need. This was sort of just a generous outreach that was made to us from this company. They're, I did some research on them. They are located in Open Square. They do like different types of healthcare technologies in the area. So, so I think the call came in two or three weeks ago and so we've got it ready for this meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson.
I was just going to add that they're headquartered in Holyoke. Pixel Health has provided IT consultation and support services to over forty-five healthcare institutions over the past thirteen years. So it is a Holyoke-based business looking to give back to its community, which is nice.
Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
I'd like to make a motion. At the student, the school committee vote to receive the warrants listed above.
Seconded by Ms. LaFevre. Discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Updates of committees, Policy and Governance Subcommittee. Ms. Wilson.
I'm pulling up my calendar here. I believe it was the, I was scheduling it for, our next meeting is Wednesday, September third at six o'clock. I do have to verify if the individual from MASC can attend. I realized on my way here, I had not reached out to Ms. LaFond and she's busy. So tentatively, it's Wednesday, September third. If it needs to change, it will. Yes.
Thank you. Finance and Operations Subcommittee, Mr. Willian.
Thank you. The committee met on August twenty-first. Some of the topics we talked about tonight, we just, our finance director assisted us with the presentation. We just had a final budget report for fiscal year twenty-five. I think we spent ninety-eight percent of the budget. So that was good. I know we had some concerns. I'll speak for myself. I know Ms. LeBron Martinez mentioned it too that, you know, even though we're spending the budget down, a lot of the funds were transferring, they're, they're coming from classroom services. So we're, we're taking revenue from vacancies and salaries and we're appropriating those to other facets within the budget. So even though the budget is solid and we're not, we're in a good financial situation, there's less money being spent in the classroom. And so that's a quote that I went out there. So I'm just, it's just a concern because of the vacancies throughout the district. We just had a review of all the budget transfers, many of them that we've been covering. And we had a verbal facility report, just mentioning all the improvements to our schools throughout the last couple of years, anything from sidewalk repairs to playground improvements. We're in the pipeline for five new roofs, either new roofs or partial roofs. Those were discussed at a recent meeting. So that's in the pipeline going through the, the state. Again, I just want to thank our finance director for assisting us throughout the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Willian. Next up, Joint City Council School Committee, Mr. Collimer and Mr. Willian.
I'm going to refer to Mr. Willian.
I drew the short straw. I think he cheats. We, we had a longer meeting. This was on Thursday, August fourteenth. Again, we had a full, we had three members of the city council and three members of the school committee. And Mr. Soto assisted us and our financial director assisted us. A lot of topics, I'll go through them real quick. Mr. Soto might want to chime in on some of those. A lot of them dealt with typical issues, safety issues with the schools. I know that Councilor Bartley was concerned that we don't have a dedicated crossing guard at the Metcalf. So that was discussed in length. We talked about safety issues from the drop-off and pick-off perspectives, perspective with cars going through the areas fast and not really giving a lot of consideration to the students and the crossing guards. I kind of chimed in and I, I had, I've received complaints about some of the parents not adhering to some of the directives. Um, some of the directives in terms of, um, the drop-off and the pick-up, um, pick-up. So I chimed in on that. Um, we talked about the, um. Exit assurances, um, from the state. So that came up, um. We had a letter from a, um, uh, Commissioner Tutwiler. Um, his memo was part of the meeting, um, and just where we are in terms of a. District, we're getting out of receivership. I know the, um, city council, they get a lot of, um. Feedback from their constituents in terms of they're nervous about that. Um, and again, um, I think some of the, some of the teachers were, were calling them with their, uh, concerns. So we sorta helped them, put them at ease with that, um. Saying that we have a good team here in place and we're working in the right direction. Um. There was a couple of orders regarding the PEC school and an update on the progress on that. And, um, signage at the PEC school. Some of the issues we had a table for future meetings. Um, I know, um, we talked about the, uh, the grand opening for the PEC school. Everyone's excited about that. Um, we had other issues in terms of the safety. Um, Mr. Soto explained that. We have one, um, one dedicated school resource officer that's gonna be working between Sullivan and PEC. On a full-time basis. So I was relieved to hear that. And, um. There was a question on whether the district would be affected by the. Potential lack of federal grants coming into the district. And I know Sean gave an overview on that. Um, so far, so good on that. So those are the issues we talked about. Some of them were tabled. Um, going forward, but, um, it was a productive meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willihan. Stop doing a good job so that you don't get the short straw every time. Kidding, kidding. Next we have Local Control Subcommittee, Ms. LaFave.
We're all set.
Leadership Accountability and Measurement Subcommittee.
We'll be meeting soon to, uh, discuss with the superintendent about goals from the last meeting.
Thank you so much. Announcement, don't forget the PEC ribbon cutting ceremony at four fifteen at PEC Middle School on September second. Ms. LaFave.
I know that the Springfield Puerto Rican Parade is coming up sometime in September. Did we get information on that one?
Yes. Irene sent it out.
Okay. I'll look through.
Three times.
Alright, listen. You don't even have to go there. Got it. Maybe you didn't.
Yes, that is September.
Send it to the right one. Maybe you sent it to Em Feliciano at.
Ms. Feliciano.
I'll make sure to double your emails. Um, but I'm just waiting also for, um, confirmation from Garcia to. Your drop-offs and everything else. So I should have that by the end of the week.
Thank you so much. And that is the Springfield Puerto Rican Day Parade, September fourteenth. Mr. Willihan.
Thank you. It's not on the agenda, but just a quick question on the scope of services for the search, um. Superintendent search. Do we have homework on that? And I don't know whether, when you were expecting our feedback on that.
So the, the. We, we got the feedback on that and we have our homework to send for the quotes. And then that's gonna be sent to the Subcommittee. No problem. Ms. Denzley Williams.
Um, will we get a ride with Mr. Columor and myself if he's going?
We're always taking care of you.
Okay.
You need a ride, we'll make it happen.
Okay, thanks.
Any other announcements?
I have a quick one.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Williams.
I've had calls from principals, um, wanting me to volunteer and go back into the schools with the children with the poems. So I just need some, I gotta show you guys something real quick. Uh, this poem is coloring books and I'll show you what I'm gonna do. Have you ever wondered why coloring books are so much fun? It could be when you color, the crayons do not run. Coloring books have so many pictures and lots of things to do. The crayon colors that you use, they are so pretty too. Coloring books come in all sizes. Some are large and some are small. When you finish coloring the pictures, you may frame them for your wall. When coloring time is over and you put the books away, put them where you can find them to color another day. I will be showing the kids after we color. Uh, this is something, you know, food came in, but. Be a frame for them and they can hang it on their wall. I think this is a good idea and I do crafts, so I will be going into.
One thing that didn't make it to the, to my vice chair report is that we have the appointment for. Two members for the negotiations team. That would be Mr. Sheen and myself. Just making sure that's out there. Oh, teacher contract negotiations. Thank you.
We don't need a moment.
No. So now we need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Wilson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned at seven thirty.